I call the CBJ Assembly Committee of the Whole to order at 6:00 PM on September 9th, 2024. Madam Mayor, would you kindly read the land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on Klinkit land and wish you honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than 10,000 years, Alaskan Native people have been and continue to be integral to the well-being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the Klinkit people. Good luck, sheesh.
Good luck, sheesh. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Adkison.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Well, I'll keep it up.
Here.
Ms. Hughes-Scandies.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Wall.
Present.
Mr. Bryson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Welton.
Here.
Acquire, Miss President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any objections to the agenda, objections or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Are there any objections or changes to the minutes from September 18th, 2023, or December 18th, 2023? Seeing no objections or changes, those minutes are approved. We'll move right into agenda topics. First item is flood mitigation update. Madam Manager, take it away.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hale. So I would like to let the public and the Assembly know that I will be referencing a memo that was a red folder item. So there are copies of it in the back. They're under supplemental items. And so apologies, that did not make it into the packet, but was reporting on an inter-agency meeting that representatives from CBJ had on Friday. So not able to write about it until it happened. I think it was a really impressive meeting. We had attendees from National Weather Service, DOT, NRCS, Army Corps of Engineers, National Weather Service, USGS, United States Forest Service, Klinkit and Haida, and the offices of Senator Murkowski and Senator Sullivan. So really, A-list group of hydrologists, engineers, representatives, and it was a really productive meeting. So I'm going to talk a little bit about just some of the a-haz that I had about Yokalups and this Yokalup in particular. Then I'm going to hand it over to Deputy Manager Barr, who's going to talk about our current situation, and then pivot back to kind of what can we do and some both short-term and longer-term mitigations that are proposed in this memo and some asked from the Assembly. So I think the first just sobering point that was brought home to all of us participating is the, you know, basin is filling up as we speak, right? So last year, we had a release in about this time, maybe a year after the Yokalup. No one noticed it because it was a small release. But of course, as it continues to fill, there's that possibility of a release. So Deputy Manager Barr is going to speak to that a little bit. National Weather Service is engaged in daily forecasting and reporting on that. Also, just, you know, those of you who lived through it don't need to be told, but the massive volume of water that was involved, I mean, if you were to put that on Mendon Hall Lake, Suicide Basin, just on Mendon Hall Lake, it's 41 feet. So, I mean, it's just on that, and that water released in 24 hours. So, you know, as all the attendees said, we are so unique because most communities that are dealing with flooding are dealing with, you know, flooding over time, increased flooding. We are really have gone from zero to 100 overnight. And so that's, it puts our community in a very unique situation. All of those things, I think, just underscore the urgency for action, both in the near term and the long term. And we're going to talk about that a little bit more, but I think I'll hand it over to you to show some images of the basin currently.
Okay. So this is the Suicide Basin website that is hosted by the National Weather Service. I think probably many people are familiar with it. This is one of the sub-pages that looks at one of the cameras that is pointed at the basin itself. Right now, it's tagged to August 13th, so a little bit less than a month ago. And I'm just going to scroll through the images and show you the daily growth that we've seen in the basin since then. You can see a scale on the, both in the background on the image as well as in the foreground in the upper right. And that, that gives you a sense of the releases that we saw in 2021, 22, and 22, and 2023. This hasn't been updated yet for this year's event, which of course would be higher than that. So I'm going to scroll through these relatively quickly. I'll pause about halfway through and, and then talk some more at the end. So you can see the water starting to refill in the basin. We're at August 25th. This is the end of the month, entering September. In today's image. So at the current rate of fill, I mean, the basin fills in a handful of different ways, two primarily, one from precipitation and two from the waterfall that you can see in the background coming down from Suicide Glacier. And at the current rate of fill, you know, our, and this is just my napkin math, the Weather Service hasn't yet given us a prediction on this, but it, it looks like we're a little bit more than a month, maybe five weeks out from the basin being filled. In past years, we have seen releases, including larger releases in October, so that wouldn't be an anomaly. And it's, one of the things that we learned, that we discussed a fair bit on Friday's meeting, was that the fact that we've seen partial releases of the basin in the past, partial in the sense that when the water releases, it stops before it's what we think of as its full release amount, is rare in glacial lake outburst floods. It's more common to see releases of however much water is in that basin, all the way down to what we think of as its base. I say that because we don't know completely, we don't have a complete understanding of what its base is, but that, that, that understanding has improved over time, over the years, as, as it's been studied. So the likely scenario is that when the basin releases, if the basin releases again this season, it will release down to its base, which is, you know, where it was at in, after, you know, August, August 6, 7, 8, and before it started filling around August 13th, 14th of this year. So, you know, ideally, we, we of course want to see a release as soon as possible, because if it released right now, we would not be looking at a major flooding event. But the closer it gets to those record levels, the more, the more, I think, cause for concern. So I will hand it back over to Katie.
Thank you. I think just the other takeaway that I had, which has been discussed before, but kind of drives home the need for, for doing some additional floodplain, or some additional mapping of the inundation zone, is as the ice decreases in the Suicide Basin, the volume of water increases. And we still have basically more ice to melt in that basin. So there's both the probability that we could have a larger event or more impactful event because we could, it could happen during the middle of an atmospheric river, and also as time goes on, climate warms and more of that ice melts or what have you. I'm not sure what's driving, that's just a supposition, but time, you would, you could also have a greater release. So, all of that to say, we kind of started with that review of, of the Yokalup and the event in particular. We did, we discussed a lot, the response, and just really wanted to drive home to everyone involved, the severity of how impactful it's been for Juneau and for our community, and really underscore that sense of urgency. We took the options that you all, Assembly, saw at the Assembly meeting on the 19th of August, in addition to ones that the public has been giving us for mitigation options. And we really encouraged and were successful in having a pretty free-form brainstorming type charrette, for lack of a better word, going through all of those options. And we evaluated them based on different criteria, timeline. Can it be accomplished within 10 to 20 months? I mean, this is like, there are lots of long-term solutions, but we need near-term solutions. Constructibility, funding, certainly a project that's, you know, $20 million to fund is going to be more palpable than half a billion dollars to fund. And there are projects on that list that would be half a billion dollars. Certainly, community acceptance, there's going to be unintended consequences of any one of these solutions, and that's something to keep in mind. And risk, right? Risk, risk that you do more harm than good, risk that you're liable in the future for trying to do good. And so, talking through all of those options, there were definitely some that I was just, you know, a surprise, gained really good traction with, with the experts in the room, you know, tunneling being an option. They talked a lot about how we would need to have a multi-pronged approach. So no one solution is probably going to control the flooding, right? You might, it's going to need to be a combination of levee, a combination of some channelizing, maybe some hardening to protect bank that's, that's, you know, otherwise impacted. Really hard to tell all of those things, though, without additional study of the river and additional mapping. And so that's why you will see in this memo a request to move forward very expeditiously with a hydrological study of the river and new inundation mapping. There is a program through the Army Corps of Engineers, and we've engaged with them even today, to do that mapping. And, you know, likely that they could get funding for that through continuing resolution from the federal government, but just does not fit with our timeline. I mean, this information is necessary for anything we do in the short term or the long term. And so working closely with Army Corps of Engineer and that group, we want to make sure that we can initiate some work now, as soon as, as soon as we can, you know, issue an RFP and score that RFP, to have that work done over the winter, so that we can really understand how, how the river is moving and how we'd respond to those solutions. So it became pretty obvious that there's really no short-term, like, construction solution, you know, trenching, building, that, that could be done successfully in, you know, before next summer. And so that really pivoted the group's attention to flood fighting, which will still require understanding the river. I mean, we, to develop a robust flood fighting plan that will require, you know, think, think sandbags that are six feet high that have to be filled by loaders strategically placed, and then hardening of the bank on opposite sides. We're very fortunate that we have, you know, a large area of undeveloped land on one side of the river. That's actually not common in a lot of these scenarios. But what is common is Army Corps of Engineers having to deal with flooding. This is something that happens all across the United States, and they actually were created to help deal with rivers and how rivers, you know, impact communities and infrastructure. So we really feel like leaning into flood fighting in the near term is going to be our best solution in order to get us to a long-term solution. So what we're proposing in this, in this memo is to appropriate $100,000 in additional funding to be able to issue an RFP now. We're working with DOT on a scope of work for that RFP to do the hydrological study and the mapping. We have $300,000 already, a combination of the emergency appropriation that you appropriated, and then there's $150,000 appropriation in this year's CIP to deal with glacial lake outburst flooding, agency coordination and mitigation. So we feel like, together with those funding sources, we'll be able to do a robust scope of work for that, that modeling, and have some, some funding for, you know, incidental things, maybe travel, to lobby for some of this, some of these longer-term projects or even midterm projects. There will no doubt be a local commitment involved in whatever the flood fighting plan becomes. And so just kind of acknowledging that that is out there. We do have hope that Senator Murkowski's office is working on a continuing resolution for emergency funding. The White House over the weekend released a bill that, it's called an anomaly, actually, which this whole thing, experience feels like an anomaly. And it allows for an expansion to federal budget authority for, in this particular case, for emergency response. And so we're hopeful that we could get an appropriation in that legislation to help with planning for a long-term mitigation, to help with flood fighting. Again, we have no idea what flooding would cost, but when you're talking about flood fighting on this scale, there will be a cost associated with it. And then also an appropriation for a longer-term solution. So the, the near-term solution that we would like to pursue, and I'm going to pause after, after this to for questions, because then we'll talk about the, the longer-term solution. Flood fighting, to engage the Corps, does require a request from the state of Alaska. So our proposed next step would be to engage Governor Dunn Levy, both for CBJ to engage Governor Dunn Levy in requesting Army Corps support, and Klinkit and Haida to request Army Corps support for flood fighting. And just want to acknowledge the partnership between Klinkit and Haida. They participated as well in this meeting and are really ready to, you know, work collaboratively and in tandem, you know, on this recovery effort. So I think that's going to be really valuable for us. So before I stop talking about flood fighting and near term, I will pause.
Are there questions or comments from Assembly members? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Regarding the inundation maps, I know, I believe Mr. Jacobs from NWS talked about them when we were at the previous meeting. Did those maps, I mean, did they not predict, but I mean, were they correct, like, at 16 foot at the lake? Was where the inundation, did it, were they, were they correct, I guess?
Madam Manager.
They were fairly accurate, impressively so.
Additional questions? Ms. Wall, and then Mr. Bryson.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. My, it's great to hear there are some ideas in here getting traction. I am, you know, part of my initial assumptions, you know, when it came to feasibility, was really about the complexities of permitting, assuming many of these options, you know, would require some pretty significant hurdles with Forest Service lands, with salmon streams, with other federal resources that are hard to get exemptions for. You know, we talked about a lot of these things being Congress-driven and Congress very hard to predict at this point. Did you get a sense, when you say traction, were there ideas in here that people felt like would be, you know, politically feasible from that perspective, or, you know, that, that we could get the exemptions we needed to build those projects if they were, you know, engineeringly feasible?
Madam Manager.
Yeah. I think that the, the overall tenor was that any project of this magnitude and potential unintended consequences would have to go through a regular permitting process. And so Army Corps of Engineer as the project lead on that would, would be going through NEPA, would, you know, be going through all of those permitting processes. And, and what's important is, as the project lead, they own any liability that that project creates. So that's kind of what, what forced us to really pivot to flood fighting as a more near-term solution. It just didn't seem, you know, the combination of the complexity of the problem solving and the potential for unintended consequences really pushed the, the kind of longer-term fix or the construction fix to a more regular project schedule, for lack of a better term.
Thank you. Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Madam Manager, what is the difference from last year? Because a lot of these, while I'm glad that they're at, that everybody's at the table now, I'm sure that we wanted some of these conversations to happen last year. What, can you just maybe comment on the change of govern, of these entities' attitude towards this problem from last year to this year now?
Madam Manager.
Yeah, thank you. It definitely feels very different, and the event feels very different. And I think the main, the main difference probably is number of homes impacted. Last year, we probably had less than 100 homes impacted, and many of them were on the river, and they saw significant erosion, which was resolved with hardening of that bank. A resolution for the 300 homes that were flooded is a lot harder to, you know, throw money at from an individual homeowner's perspective. And so I, I think that just the breadth of the incident and also the fact that it's, you know, it wasn't an anomaly. It's happened two years in a row now. I mean, certainly, the delegation, the federal delegation coming and visiting within days of the event, they turned right back around and put pressure on all those agencies. So, so kudos to them.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. For the flood fighting, whether we use the six-foot-high sandbags or not, how realistic is that, that we could have something by next spring's, next summer?
Madam Manager, or Mr. Barr? Mr. Deputy Manager.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. It's a good question. And we, Manager Kester mentioned that the Army Corps is heavily engaged in flood fighting efforts outside of Alaska. And so one of the, one of the letters that we plan to send to them soon is a letter requesting support from the section of the Army Corps that, again, exists in the lower 48, that is entirely focused on flooding and coastal erosion and flood, flood control. So we'll have a better answer to that question after we've engaged with them. But I would say the tenor of the meeting, and there were plenty of Army Corps folks present, was, you know, by implication, that we would be able to do something from a flood fighting perspective before next, before next, before next year's event.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, follow-up, and then Mrs. Scandies.
Since we're talking about the Army Corps, can we bring in the National Guard ahead of schedule and try something with them this year or this coming summer?
Madam Manager.
Yeah. I mean, I, I do not know exactly what that looks like, but we absolutely discussed a pre-disaster declaration that would trigger those resources. Think like full-court press. You have, you know, two weeks before you, you think the event's going to happen, you have dozers, you have every single, you know, CBJ and DOT employee out there, sandbagging, et cetera. I mean, that level of, of attack may be necessary.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mrs. Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Imagining the short-term flood fighting is, do we think, like, an ideal, if you're talking about six-foot sandbags, would be a picture like two layers of them lining the entire river. But do we, I can imagine there are some limits on capacity and resources, even when we're talking near term, although you did just say full-court press. Do we think, based on the maps and increased study that we hope to get from that, like, areas to focus on, is that, would that be part of that, that it'll inform next summer?
Madam Manager, and with Mr. Deputy Manager.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I had a meeting on that very topic today, and that's exactly one of the things that we hope, the inundation, the modeling project that we're hoping to engage on sooner rather than later would help us answer. So the, there are, there are many goals associated with that, but two of the big ones are new, updated inundation maps that take into account the changing nature, how the river has changed since the last time we did the inundation mapping project, as well as what it would look like from an inundation perspective at different levels and higher levels than the maps currently show. And then the second major goal is exactly what you said, to help us understand where the ideal places along the river would be to do flood fighting, perform flood fighting efforts, and what the impacts on, you know, the rest of a flood at any given level would look like with flood fighting in, like, Area A, B, and C, and not Area C, D, and E, that kind of thing.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, hold good duck.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wondering, so I know that there's a lot of questions about, you know, preparing for next summer, but your initial photos that you showed us makes me think we need to be prepared for something a little sooner, even the just-in-case for right now, considering the height that the basin has already reached. And so just in thought process of, of what we have before us, is there anything that's going into preparation for if we get a second flood this fall?
Thank you, Madam Manager.
I mean, I have to admit, I was, I think I put my head on my desk and, yeah, on, on Friday, when, when I realized, I mean, it's not a, it's a reasonable assumption that it fills back up. So I guess to answer your question, no, I do not have a, I don't have a clue what we would do in advance of October, if we had a full release in October. But Deputy Manager Barr might.
Thank you. Deputy Manager Barr.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. You know, it would certainly be extraordinarily challenging. And I think thinking through that question is a task that, that we and our partner agencies have in front of us in the next week or so. We don't have good answers to that question tonight. The Weather Service emailed us today with, you know, more detail on that, on that question that we started thinking about on Friday. And forecasting, you know, is, is beginning in a more formal way on their end today. So I don't, I don't want to give either unnecessary pessimism or unnecessary optimism in answering that question, or unrealistic optimism, but it's definitely something that would be both incredibly challenging to think through how we would react in a different way in the next four weeks. But I think it's also something that we want to, to whatever extent we have the ability to care for, to care for.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Manager. We have Ms. Adkison, and then we have Ms. Hughes-Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I was just wondering, in terms of measures that CBJ was already taking before this year's flood, like the duck bills and the culverts and such, are we planning on, you know, fixing that damage ourselves, or will that be a part of the Army Corps of Engineers project? Like, where are we on those measures? Yeah, you already appropriated funds to fix the duck bills, and I'm not sure where we are on that project, but I know that we're, you know, with that emergency appropriation, moving forward with that. Of course, you know, from a notification, we learned a lot this year, you know, there are things that we can certainly do better to make sure the public is, you know, prepared and notified. But from a flood fighting response, I think that thought work needs to be done still.
Thank you, Mrs. Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you, this may be a question other people have, so I'll go ahead and ask it, even though I feel somewhat silly. You rightly characterize Juneau as going from no flooding to then we had low-level flooding we all expected, and then all of a sudden bam, to a big event with a house falling in the river, and then a much bigger event. So seeing those video, or the images of the basin filling back up makes me feel like I'm in a disaster movie. And is it also reasonable to expect that even though the basin is filling, that we're not going to see any release until summer? I mean, is that, I understand that no one can fully predict and that they're going to be forecasting. And last year, we spent a lot of time asking, what's changed? And the answer is, you know, slow and steady march of the way the glacier and climate are interacting. But is it equally, without being able to predict, that it may not release until next summer? Or is there something in the images you just showed us, because we're just learning this now, that we should expect to see a partial release?
Madam Manager.
Yeah. So I think that our hope would be that we see a release, you know, any day now, from now until, you know, before it gets to, to major flood stage, and that is consistent with in the past. That kind of a theory being that it's already found its path once, so it's kind of so it's kind of easier to find that path.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Manager. I have a couple of questions as well. Mr. Deputy Manager, you had shown me and some others a picture of what flood fighting looks like and I think it might be advantageous for the rest of the Assembly members to see that picture and also for our audience to see that picture if you could pull that up for us. Because it was educational for me, so we'll pause for a moment and let Mr. Deputy Manager pull that up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So there's lots of different ways that flood fighting can be done. The image that I showed you this morning is, is this. This is just one example of one vendor that makes a sandbag equivalent. This is a very large sandbag that is filled, as was mentioned earlier, with, with a loader. And you, you can, you can see in, in this particular image, you know, a river on the right, dry land on the left, and, and those large, large sandbags in the middle. There are, there are others, so I don't, I don't have them pulled up right now, but in, in my memo from our last meeting, there were some images of different vendors that have different types of sandbag equivalents that are filled not with earth but with water. There's another one that is filled with air and then is anchored down. So we, we would, in engaging with that Army Corps group that is, you know, are the experts on flood fighting, we would evaluate all the options with them and of course take their, take their expertise and guidance.
So it'd almost be like a temporary levy?
I, I think it's fair to think, to think of these as temporary levy.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate others' questions, Wahal Gudak and, and Mrs. Scandies about, about the timing, because I think it's a shock for, not only are you, did you lay your head on the desk, but we all figuratively want to lay our head on the desk. And so I, I didn't, we had talked a little bit about neighborhood meeting as soon as we've got a few of those resources, like the Army Corps, potentially the Army Corps flood fighting team, so that we can actually work with the neighborhood. And I think that will be very important. I think also, given what we've learned here today, it will be very important to figure out ways to update the community, sort of almost, almost in real time. I know you're going to be engaging with the National Weather Service, but there's, I think, a lot of people in this room and a lot of people watching online that will need those updates. So I just, I think maybe I want to emphasize that and ask what your plans are and then also just let people know that that's a priority for us.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hale. I think that providing a summary of this meeting and this update to our floodresponse.gov group, we have collected names over the last two years of people who emailed us. And so we will, we will keep, that's our primary channel to keep those who are directly interested, directly engaged outside of our normal public notice process. And then I do think that a community meeting, a neighborhood meeting, when we have a better idea of what flood fighting looks like, is going to be really important because it will be invasive to certain homeowners, right? If, if it's, if it needs to go on their property, there may be things that individuals could do, you know, to take responsibility for their own property that, that we, we really don't know. So providing not only kind of an outline of a plan, we of course won't have a full plan until we've done the mapping, until we've done the studies, right? We won't be able to say if we put up, if we put six foots of sandbags here, where does that, what does that do to the water over here and upstream and downstream? But we can, we can bring the experts to engage the community much, much better on that.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And since the basin is filling, I'm assuming that we're coming up with a plan to warn people, I think people will be paying more attention to, but warn people even if it's driving fire trucks to the neighborhoods with sirens going on until we get to mount a siren.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And that, that was my next question as well, is if, if in two weeks it hasn't released and it continues to flood and it doesn't get cold, it, it may be that a neighborhood meeting to talk about, you know, if the flood is impending, what do we do? You know, what do people do with their houses? You know, what do people do with their belongings? What do they do for safety? So that might be something that we will need to consider. Thank you. Are there further questions or comments before we move on in the memo and talk about funding for these action steps? I see none. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So just to reiterate, we are requesting tonight an additional $100,000 to do the hydrological study and the inundation maps. We also are, are going to be requesting Governor Dunlevy submit a letter to engage the Army Corps in flood fighting. And we will be submitting requests to Senator Murkowski and Sullivan for some planning and implementation money for flood fighting and also to match a general investigation study for the Army Corps of Engineer for a long-term solution. So I'm going to pivot a little bit to the longer-term solution. And that is any, any number of kind of ideas that have been discussed in, in kitchen tables and at assembly meetings, you know, tunnels and trenching and levees and dams and, and the like. And so we really want to be able to engage Army Corps of Engineers as soon as possible in that effort. They are prepared for it. They came here last week and took some high-water measurements to, to begin that process. The general investigation study is the, the feasibility and the planning and the design for that. And that's a $6 million project with a $3 million commitment from a non-federal local sponsor, CBJ in this case, and then a $3 million commitment from the federal government. And so, but we initiate that request by sending them a letter, doesn't commit us to funding that until we actually have an agreement, but it allows them to begin working on the project and scoping the, the general investigation study. So we, we are, it's our intention, after, you know, discussing with the Assembly, to send that request. That would require, again, a local match of $3 million and also require us to find federal funding. And so we would be submitting in our request to Senator Murkowski and Senator Sullivan if this emergency funding appropriation mechanism comes through, that that include $3 million to Army Corps of Engineers to provide the federal side of that, of that match and allow us to proceed with engaging them fully in a general investigation study for a longer-term solution. So you will see that one of my recommendations is to introduce an ordinance to appropriate that $3 million match.
Madam Mayor.
So I would move that we have staff draft an appropriate ordinance for $3 million for the match, for the USAC study. And my plans are to deappropriate $2 million from the purchase of the UAS land by the high school. I don't remember the title of it. And then also deappropriate $900,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund that was taken for Wayne Coogan's project that hasn't materialized as of yet. And between now and the time it gets introduced, Ms. Wright and Ms. Wendell and I will come up with a funding source for the other $100,000. And so this is set to be introduced on our next Assembly meeting and then we will have to, I don't want to put it in my motion, we will have to come up with a time that we can zoom in for a special Assembly meeting to pass it. So we have this in our, our, in, in our pockets when we head back east and ask for funding, that we can show that we've already set aside $3 million, which will be very helpful. And I ask for a now consent.
Are there any objections? I see no, oh, Ms. Wall.
Just objecting for a question to the maker of the motion. Are you moving those deappropriations as part of your motion? Like, would we have a multiple ordinances that do that or are you just speaking generally that you would introduce those at a later date? I wasn't quite sure about the motion.
I'm letting Ms. Wright figure that out, but whether it's one motion or two motions, but, or excuse me, one ordinance or two ordinances, but she's still working on that unless she wants to speak to it now, because I haven't talked to her for a couple hours.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Assembly member Wall, Ms. Wendell and I are working on that. And the plan will either be an ordinance that has the appropriating and deappropriating in it or it may be, it may come in the form of an ordinance appropriating and two resolutions deappropriating. So we're still working on it, but, but they're tied together. They'll come as one package at a time. It's just a matter of the best wording for you.
Ms. Wall, do you maintain your objection or do you have further questions?
Um, just a quick comment. I mean, this is happening pretty quickly here and I'm not opposed to moving forward with $3 million for this project, recognizing we have to figure out where to get that money, but you know, we've got a few other options. And so I don't know if there's a way that we can move forward with this ordinance without yet specifying until we've had the moment to discuss. I just don't know that this group is, I'm just hearing about these two, these funding sources, so. I suppose I would, if, if the mayor, unless the mayor, I, I can make an amendment, I guess, to simplify the motion to only introduce the ordinance associated with the $3 million so that we can have the discussion of the deappropriations at a later date.
Madam Mayor.
I believe in an appropriating ordinance, we do have to specify where the funds are coming from, so I don't know that that's an option, but I'm looking at Ms. Wright. So at this time, we're still drafting, so we can talk about it now, but once the ordinance gets written, I believe we have to have a funding source.
Madam Attorney. No, Madam Manager.
So the funding source would be fund balance. And then it would either be, you know, backfilled by a deappropriation or not.
Madam Mayor.
If someone wants to amend my motion, they are welcome to, but I, with only $5.5 million in our fund balance, I'm not comfortable with that.
Thank you. Mrs. Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would then, hearing all this discussion, that I would move to amend the ordinance, direct staff to draft that ordinance and introduce it as Madam Mayor has characterized with funding source being fund balance. And can I speak to my, my amendment?
Please do.
I think this is a fine amendment. I understand where Madam Mayor is coming from and I do think that may end up being the funding source, but given this is a red folder item and not everybody has had a chance to process those funding sources, it's absolutely worth letting this body, I think, figure out what the, whether that deappropriation is best or whether a different funding source is best. But as the manager points out, we will either backfill or not, but at the end of the day, it's all coming generally from the same place. So I would move that amendment and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you. Are there any objections?
Madam Deputy Mayor, just a point of order. I believe Ms. Wall actually made that same motion, so I just want to make sure that we don't have two competing motions at the same time.
No, I didn't realize she fully moved that. I withdraw that.
I'm not sure, so we wanted that.
Yeah, Ms. Wall did make a motion.
My intent was to move that same motion. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear. I don't care who makes it, but that was my, that's what I thought, that's what I thought I was doing.
Okay, so you made the motion, that, Mrs. Scandies. Are there any objections to that motion? That amendment, seeing none, that amendment passes and we're back to the original motion. Are there any objections to the mayor's original motion as amended? Seeing none, that motion passes to ask staff to bring an ordinance, draft ordinance to the Assembly on the 16th of September. Madam Mayor.
I have another motion. I'll make this simple for everybody, because it seems to be that. I will also direct staff to draft an appropriating ordinance for $100,000 for mapping, modeling, and incidentals to give them a little bit of freedom, which adds to our other $300,000. And the funding source will be from General Fund at this time. And introduce it at our September 13th meeting.
Madam Mayor, before I ask if there are objections, I think that, is the motion to increase the existing ordinance by $100,000?
No, it's a different ordinance.
So.
It's for different reasons.
So, I will.
Can I speak to my amendment?
Yes, why don't you do that?
Okay, so the first one was the $3 million for the match. This is $100,000. If you look at the first bullet point, the city manager has found $300,000, but to get to the $400,000, she needs another $100,000.
Okay, that, that was what I wanted to clarify.
This is for the mapping, modeling, and incidental. So that's, does that help?
Yeah. Are there any objections? Mr. Kelly.
Thanks. Just a clarifying question. I think I heard the mayor say September 13th that she meant September 16th meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you remove your objection? Are there any objections? Seeing none, staff are so directed to prepare that ordinance. Madam Mayor.
Sorry. And then I just need to do a quick check with everybody to see if they're available for September 23rd for a special Assembly meeting over Zoom, probably about noon. I'm looking, Madam Clerk, I think that's the time we decided. And that would be to, we're going to introduce these ordinance on the 16th and then we can pass them, if they so passed, on the 23rd. So they would be taken care of, so we would have them in our pocket, except for, especially for the $3 million and for any other expenses of the $100,000 that we could use right away. So I'm just looking to see anybody's availability.
September 23rd?
September 23rd, correct, Madam Clerk, which is a Monday. How about this way, is there anybody not available? Did we lose Wahal Gudak?
Wahal Gudak had to go.
Oh, there she is. Sorry.
She's walking to.
Are you available? Okay, perfect. All right.
Very good.
So I'm looking at that, Madam Clerk, will you make that happen? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Deputy Mayor will do.
Mr. Smith, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just to confirm, Madam Manager, you do not need funds to, you don't need funds this year to, as best we can, try to prepare, prevent whatever damage should there be another release in the, hate to say it, but in the, you know, nearest term, a couple of months. You, you have adequate resources to do all we can there. Is that correct?
Madam Manager.
I think it is unknown what resources are needed for flood fighting in the very near term and in the 10-month term. Once we engage the Corps, we'll have a, a much better idea of, you know, any local match requirements. We of course do intend on asking for federal appropriation for flood fighting, but I just can't answer that question without understanding what that, that looks like. So, so I am foreshadowing a likely additional request.
And that is, if you, if you determine you need resources, you'd come back to us. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Would this being in the, the community impact level that it is, would the restricted budget reserve qualify to maybe one of the funding sources? I know that, that's why I was asking if that's even a legal option for us.
Madam Manager.
I think that the plan to pay that back would just be the part that would require thought. There's no obvious mechanism, like when we, you know, when we requested funding to do some emergency repairs after the event, we have a plan to get that paid back. Certainly, the Assembly could develop a plan and say, you know, we're going to dedicate this revenue stream to paying back the restricted budget reserve or what have you. But that would just be the component that would need to be fleshed out if, if that's the funding source.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Madam Mayor.
Mainly, this is mainly for the audience's benefits. The two ordinances I introduce don't rise to the, in our procedures, don't rise to level of emergency, so that's why we have to go through our normal process. But what Mr. Smith was talking about, if the city manager needed funds, we could do an emergency meeting and emergency appropriation. So we're not letting people hang, but it can happen faster. And if we declared a disaster, that opens up some funding too.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was a good clarification. Mrs. Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on the $3 million for the federal side, did you, did we talk at all about, or this will help us, and said, because we can go and say, look, we're serious, we set this aside. If we don't get the funding on the federal side, what happens then? Or then we come back to the drawing board?
Madam Manager.
I, I think we would need I, I think we would need the 3 million on the federal side. If we don't get it this year, we would probably just continue to advocate for it in, as a congressionally-directed spending request. So that's, that, that's a, in fact, we've received that through the, for OBE wave attenuator. That's, that's a general investigation study through the Corps that we've received the authorization for through CDS. So, you know, you, you expect to see this request as a top priority on the legislative priority list, and also probably some encouraging to winnow that list down, just to really convey the importance of, of that, that funding request. So I, I think we would just continue to pursue that match in all the available funding mechanisms. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I will give us about a 10-minute break so that we can speak with members of the audience. Madam Manager, before we take that break, is, speak individually, is there anything further on this subject?
No, just, just for the Assembly's comfort, the 3 million dollars, and I really appreciate your expediency on that, that ordinance will be for match money for general investigation studies. So if I need, you know, more money to do, like hire a contractor or hire an engineer that, that would go beyond the $400,000 in authorization, I would come back to you. So that, that's kind of very much held in reserve for that specific process. Just as far as your comfort level with that appropriation, I wanted to make sure and emphasize.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Are there further comments or questions before we take a break? Thank you. We will take a break and we'll be back at 7:02. Bring the meeting of the Committee of the Whole back to order at 7:05 PM. Thank you, audience members and Assembly members for sticking through this really, really, really difficult subject. Madam Manager, on to the next business, next item of business.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hale. The next item doesn't require Assembly action, but it certainly requires Assembly guidance and, and comfort because it's a policy pivot. So we are essentially requesting to repurpose the JSD position that was included in the budget for monitoring junior school district finances. And through kind of some, some juggling of positions, use that funding and authority to hire an additional position in an emergency management division. And first I'll speak to why we feel like, why we are comfortable making that recommendation as it relates to JSD finances. First, you know, that position always was going to be a kind of monitoring, reporting, researching position, right? That position could not do any work on behalf of the junior school district without being, it being considered outside the cap funding. And so it wasn't helpful to JSD in a strictly defraying other costs that they might be incurring. I'm sure, you know, it's helpful to them to like know that what they're doing is correct and meeting audit standards and, and all of those things. But we also just feel like the school district has done a good job at increasing their capacity and their administration department knew they previously had one position. They now have two positions, a finance director and an administrative services manager. And so that, that, that helps. And then the other reason why we're making the recommendation is the position was a requirement of the $4.1 million loan that the school district had requested in order to make itself fiscally solvent. And that loan is no longer being requested. So our, our need, the immediate need that we feel like we would like to, to pursue is adding capacity and emergency management. And, you know, I look at the list of emergencies we've had in the last four years. Those are times that we've stood up the emergency operations center. COVID-19, 2020, we had massive flooding and storm damage that actually triggered a FEMA disaster declaration. That's when Haines had loss of life. We had the Gasno Avenue tree slide that, you know, a localized event, but certainly very impactful. And then we've had two yokel loops now that have both been, you know, more longer-term response, not just a couple of day of response. So we really feel like it's no longer a matter of, you know, planning for the what-if and making sure we like, think about it once a year, and, and if we're ready, if we need to. You know, it's more like a year-round response. And our staff, you know, myself included, but all our department directors, they need to be trained in the ICS system. They need to do the planning. We need to do the tabletops. Those types of things increase our, our planning capacity. Certainly this position would also help with kind of our more immediate needs with coordinating, you know, flood fighting and, and working on those things. So it, it is a policy pivot. And even though we don't need your, you know, an ordinance, we certainly need your approval before we would do, do something like that. So happy to answer any questions.
I don't really have a question, but I did speak with Elizabeth Sidon, the current president of the School Board, and she was okay with this change. They have hired a finance director and administrative service director, so the same person isn't trying to do the same job. And she talked about too, if we have this position and if they did any work for the school district, then the school district would have to pay us for that work. And so it actually could have screwed up their funding a little bit. So I just wanted you to know that I did talk to her and she was okay with this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. What would this position be, what would their relationship be with the, the current Tom Matisse's position? Would it, could you maybe speak to how those two positions would work together?
Yeah, thank you. This would just increase that, that capacity. So they, there would be basically an additional equal-level staff person in, which would take our staffing to three in that division. Right now, it used to be two positions. There used to be an emergency manager coordinator and, and then the avalanche forecasting. So a lot of the work that Mr. Matisse does is fieldwork and really highly specialized. So just being able to, you know, obviously that's, that's an expertise that he has. And so that's why we're looking to be more robust in our planning. And not just our training, but we also have multiple hazard, like a hazard mitigation plan that needs updating, emergency operations plan, those types of like documents that also need updating.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Are there further questions or, oh, yes, sorry, Mrs. Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my question is, on the school side, we've referenced two positions, but they, school always had a finance director, correct? So while they have hired a new finance director, they've really only added one position. Is that accurate to say?
Madam Manager.
Correct. They've only added one position. I don't know, I, I can't say with accuracy that they always had a finance director. In my tenure, I worked with the administrative services director in the capacity of finance and more operations. But, but you, you could know more than me because of, you know, my, my role as engineering and public works director would, would definitely have an operations focus.
Okay. Thank you. I don't, I definitely don't. That is why I'm trying to clarify. For instance, we worked with Cassi Olin before. I don't know if her title was, and actually Mr. Kelly might know this, whether she was the finance director. Basically, my question, I'm trying to get at the heart of really how many people they have now. Because if they've increased it by 100%, that's great. But two doesn't make me feel wonderful about their administrative capacity. I guess I'll just, so that is at the heart of my questions. And I guess it's turned into a comment for the body. But I believe, and I think things have been on a steady improvement track, but I believe not lo, not too long ago, we didn't have a lot of confidence in the numbers that we were getting. And we disagreed about those numbers. And I know that we haven't set up so that we can't see those. We, we don't have that same, Mr. Barr can't say if I'm in his office, he can't log on and look at those numbers, which I saw as a great advantage to this position, even though it comes at a cost. So for me, that's more what that position is tied to and less about it being a condition of the grant, although it's great they don't need the grant. But if we don't have surety in the financial information we get from the school district, then that makes it hard to make decisions when we know they get fully half of, you know, the property taxes. We want to feel good about the information we're getting. So I guess that turned into a comment, but I'm just trying to see how big their capacity really is.
Thank you, Ms. Hugh Scandies. Before we go on to Ms. Atkinson and Mr. Kelly, Wahalgadok has had to leave the meeting because of a flight. So, Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I share some of Ms. Hugh Scandies' concerns, especially considering the school district is in a relatively stable place right now. But we just don't know what future funding will look like and if they will be in another crisis again in a year or two. So I guess my question is, we're looking at this short term, you know, switching this FTE over for emergency management. Is that shutting the door on having this school district position, monitoring position ever? Or is that like maybe looking at it again next year an option? I guess, where are your guys' thoughts on that?
Madam Manager.
Yeah. So, I mean, I will be honest, we, we spend a lot of time trying not to increase FTEs because of the pressure that puts on the operating budget. So is there, are both positions useful? Absolutely. And we're looking at bringing the Assembly a solution that doesn't put that pressure on the operating budget. So certainly next year, the Assembly could add that position back in, but it wouldn't be my intention to bring that to you as part of the manager's budget. I am relatively hopeful that in next year's budget cycle, we could get this emergency management position to be 50% funded through grants.
Thank you, Madam Manager. We have Mr. Kelly and then Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I, I guess to kind of, at least in part, answer Ms. Hugh Scandies' concerns, I believe that the hiring of Ms. Pierce is meant to replace Cassi Olin, who was the, the previous finance director. I believe there's also the, the district's intention to, to, to basically to, to interact more fluidly and improve their relationship by, from attending the, as my, in my position as the liaison to the School District Finance Committee meeting, they were actually talking about some sort of software that would be able to put a lot of their financial information online, make it more easily viewable, not only to us in the Assembly, but to the general public. So I think the lines of communication is probably the, the part I think we should be the most concerned about. And I think things are improving in that direction. And I think things are also improving in the direction of transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Madam Mayor, and then Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Like Mr. Kelly just said, I think I too share the concerns, so I'm not making my comments lightly. But I think we have a different relationship than we had even a year or two ago. So I think that's helpful. And if you remember, we also, for our audit, we are going to look at three separate audits. And so hopefully we'll end up with the school district specialist auditor, I don't know what that is, special auditor, whatever that is, who will also help with this. So.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think my comment or question is, again, maybe been touched on by a few other Assembly members. I guess I'll just say, I, I think I'm in support of this shift just because we know this is an immediate need. I guess my question is, even if we don't have a dedicated FTE to, I don't know the right word to use, you know, check the homework or provide a little oversight or whatever, I mean, there is still planning for that, for there to be some type of review, might be a better word, beyond, I mean, or is that just the audit, review of JSD finances?
Madam Manager.
Yeah. So I, I would say that that, the audit is that role. But I would also echo Mayor Weldon about, you know, relationship. And we have a standing meeting with Superintendent Hauser, monthly meeting. We, Angie also works directly with Ms. Pierce. So I think that without dedicated staff, it would be difficult for me to tell you that we have time and capacity in the finance department to like, you know, randomly double-check things and, and make sure finances are going well. But I can tell you that we do have, from a leadership perspective, that collaboration and, and partnership, which, which does help.
Thank you. I think we've heard from everybody here. Ms. Wall, did you have any thoughts to share on this?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just, I'm very supportive of this. I think we definitely, obviously disaster relief is front of mind, given the last few years and given the flood. But it's, you know, we also know it's going to get worse in the future. We need to not only be able to respond, but to proactively plan. And, you know, landslides are on my mind too. And so I'm appreciative of staff of finding a way to work it into our budget at net, net zero impact. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. And I'll just echo Ms. Wall. I'm also very supportive of the shift. Madam Manager, do you have the information you need from the Assembly? ICS, thumbs up. Mrs. Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really briefly, my only hope would be, I, I'm comfortable with that. I think, obviously, if you think we need this, we need this. My hope would be, as we approach the school financial budget cycle, if anything, I love that we have a better relationship. But if at any time that there's delays in finances or we disagree about what their finances are, if you could bring that to us right away, so we can slow down or do what we need to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Scandies. Madam Manager, move us on to Blueprint Downtown.
Thank you. I would like to invite Planning Manager Scott Shambor up to present to you. And I know he's got a robust team with him. So I'll, I'll ask if he invited any other members that are presenting with him.
Thank you, Mr. Shambor. Thank you for being here. Mr. Shambor, please proceed.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the extra time to get set up. Obviously, Blueprint Downtown, we're talking about today? Sure. Blueprint Downtown is the topic that we're talking about today. It is a small area plan that's been in work for quite a long time. And I'm going to walk through, I have about 10 slides just to get the, the committee oriented. This is the same slideshow that has been presented to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission Committee of the Whole, as well as the Lands Department, to orient those conversations. And at that point, we can open up for questions.
And thank you, Mr. Shambor. And I appreciate your moving the mic. And what we find is that if you speak directly into the mic and try not to turn your head, that's the most helpful. It's tricky.
Okay. Now that we're clear. So in your packet, you have a memo, and you have a bunch of appendices that cover a lot of items for this entire dialogue. So you have a memo, you have some revisions and comments to the plan, and I will talk a little bit about that in a second. You have some additional comments that we received since we met at the Lands Committee in your packet. And then you have the slides that I'll be going through right now. And so we'll talk a little bit about the Assembly and the Planning Commission role. We talked a lot about the beginning stages of Blueprint Downtown, because there was a lot of quality work done in 2019 era with a steering committee, an award-winning visioning process, and tons of community engagement that had been included in the plan. I'll talk a little bit about the Planning Commission review because they did forward a recommendation. a recommendation to the Assembly to adopt by ordinance with some additional language. Again, already talked a little bit about your proposed revisions that are in the plan, and then finally, a staff recommendation. So if you don't know by now, CDD has had a Blueprint Downtown Area Plan website since the very beginning. In that main link, in the center of your screen there, you have the draft Blueprint Downtown Area Plan that was also handed out in physical copy to the Assembly a few weeks ago. The draft Blueprint Downtown Area Plan includes not only the plan itself, as created by the Steering Committee, but it also includes a lot of the public comments in the appendices. So be sure to read the appendices if you're really thinking about the community engagement and thoughts on the draft plan that the Steering Committee considered. Other key pieces on the website, to make sure that you're aware of, is the Visioning Report, Process Report in full, was also presented to the Assembly after it was completed. And there's a link there on the site. We've been doing a specific outreach, especially since we've gone back to the Planning Commission, trying to get as many eyes from community members, CBJ department heads, as well as key partners in the community on that. And so we have, we've been actively recruiting those comments for about a year now. And then we have a frequently asked questions page, which covers a little bit of the things that we've heard a lot from at every level about process, on, you know, what happens to the plan once it's adopted, what is the role of it as part of the comprehensive plan, so that is available. And I will get into that a bit as well. So that has been up and running on the CDD website. The Planning Commission reviewed the Steering Committee at a COW in March, in February, and then a special meeting to review the plan in March. The Planning Commission received the Steering Committee's plan and the recommendation to adopt it by ordinance, and they reviewed it. We basically gave them a scenario where we did this presentation and asked for feedback and comments. We spaced out the special meeting to address the planner commissioners' comments, and those are also in your packet, because we assumed that a lot of the Planning Commissioners' questions would be questions the Assembly had. So that is another document in your packet today. And so, that was provided to them. And then they, after their deliberations, followed the, passed the follow-up recommendation to adopt the plan by ordinance as an addendum to the comprehensive plan with revisions noted in the staff report. And those revisions are in attachment D. The Commission added a recommendation to encourage a stronger focus on housing with preference language for projects involving housing downtown. And so the rationale for the Planning Commission during those meetings is that they liked the housing initiatives and the address that was made by the Steering Committee, but they were even wanting to go a little stronger with housing priorities going forward. So really giving the Assembly to go beyond even the suggestions that are here in the plan. And then, so that's kind of the process piece where we're at. Just a little grounding on the plan itself, because it is pretty comprehensive. You have a physical copy, and the Steering Committee came up with the long-term goal to create this as a long-term area plan that reflects current public desires and incorporates past work from relevant existing plans. On the next slide, you'll see there was over, I believe, 30 plans previously that had mentions of downtown incorporated into it, that were reviewed in, as the Steering Committee did their work, with the goal of creating an updated and more synthesized plan for the next 10 and 20 years. I'd also like to let you know that the strategy of the Steering Committee was really to build off what was already in the comprehensive plan. It's not radically different in terms of the priorities of the previous city, but it fine-tunes and enhances what is already there. The comprehensive plan does have a downtown section. It was created in 2013, but it's about a page and a half. And so this area plan, and what is the goal of all area plans, is to give more attention to specific location in the borough, and to provide more concrete steps and actions for that area, which is what it is. So realistically, the downtown blueprint takes what was built upon in 2013, enhanced it for 2021 till now, for this part of our borough. And the major goal was to provide strategic direction for growth, while embracing livability and the sense of place, as well as maintaining a quality life for residents. This is the general area of downtown. Obviously, over time, there have been lots of different maps that call downtown, and then residents refer to downtown as different things. This was the boundary that was focused on by the Steering Committee during its work. The Steering Committee carried a heavy load, 41 different Steering Committee meetings. Those are all on our website with minutes. Nine different focus areas that have been adopted into the plan, and especially a lot of the legwork during the visioning process was captured. 300 public participants, 900 unique interactions. And then, like I said, our consultants did receive an award for this work at that time.
Mr. Schambor, if I didn't mind interrupt you, just to let the Assembly know and members of the audience, that I believe our own Ms. Wall was the chair of that Steering Committee. Is that correct? I just want to thank her for that incredible effort.
And I think Betsy Brenneman's in the office, too, who had significant role on the Committee, as well as others who may be online as well.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Brenneman.
Let's see. So, community outreach engagement is huge. I do want to reemphasize that there has been a long period of time since the, from the time that the Steering Committee got its work done and the draft was produced. But knowing that, as we started to engage in the Planning Commission process, our staff was like supremely diligent at reaching out to folks and making sure people commented on it, to the point where some people got four or five different emails, and it was bordering on harassment to say, you need to get your thoughts on this plan. So really proud of the staff for the commentary that you see in your packet today. Again, here's the list of the relevant plans that already looked at. And then just to kind of give a guide for reading of the plan, there's goals and iconography that was created to really highlight the main focus areas that the Steering Committee came up with. And there are many of the things that the Assembly are well-versed in with your Assembly goals. More housing, a vibrant downtown, safe and welcoming space, diverse, well-managed tourism, strong and stable economy, and a destination with a sense of place. And so, this plan really does address a lot of, throughout the last six years, work that's been done and completed. And so that's why you will see in your revisions and updates, that some of the items in the plan that were discussed as things to do have been done. So that's where you know what has been completed already, on top of the other division for the next 17 years or so, that would be left in a 20-year area plan. Summarizing the plan itself, top five priorities, nothing new for the Assembly, housing, tourism management, year-round vitality, downtown point person, and complete the Seawalk and Harborwalk. At the end of every section, you do have the action table. So the iconography kind of gears you towards the goals that the action item is focusing on, as well as the bullet points for the action items, as well as who the anticipated partners are, the timeline, and the relevant plans that it addresses from the past that were reviewed. The Steering Committee was really excited about making sure that this plan was not sitting on a shelf, and it was measured for success. So they did provide a series of metrics in the plan to take a look at, to see how some of their goals have been addressed in the plan. And so that's the general, kind of, wherewithal for the plan. Obviously, it's, in the Assembly is court now, in terms of process. And I do want to talk a little bit about Comp Plan Code, and how comprehensive plan fits in general, since this is going to be adopted into the plan potentially. And so, in the beginning of Title 49, it talks about the use of comprehensive plans in the city and borough of Juneau. And it's, if the comprehensive plan is adopted by the Assembly by ordinance, it contains the policies that guide and direct public and private land use activities in the city and borough of Juneau. So there's the overall comprehensive plan, and then there's the small area plans and other plans that have been adopted by ordinance. And so at this point, there's basically A through O plans in the last, since the 2013 update, that have also been adopted by ordinance included in the plan. And so, this is kind of going to give the Assembly some of your options. If you did adopt it by ordinance, it would go in there as probably P, Blueprint Downtown, adopted to be part of the comprehensive plan. Or it could be like other plans, the Willoughby District Land Use Plan, the Assembly at the time only wanted to adopt Chapter Five by ordinance. And so Chapter Five is part of the comprehensive plan, where the rest of it is more of a reference informational item. So you do have some tools when deliberating how to review this plan going forward. And so, I think that is enough, kind of grounding for the Committee. And I can answer questions as you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Schambor. Are there questions for Mr. Schambor about Blueprint Downtown, or about the process? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I noticed that, and this was also mentioned in the slideshow, that questions that the Planning Commission made were included in our packet. When and how would that be communicated, those answers be communicated to them?
Through the Chair. So, the Planner/Commissioner questions were provided to staff in their first meeting as a Committee of the Whole, I believe it was in February. And so we took those questions, answered them, and turned it back into an item for their meeting to deliberate on. So the item in your packet is the answers to those questions. So they've already had it reviewed it, and we talked about it during their second meeting, and then they passed the recommendation forward, because they're finished with their work.
Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I, you know, I see the Planning Commission recommendation is to adopt this by ordinance. Was that, when it was presented to them, was that the staff recommendation as well, or was that something they, you know, kind of weighed between the two options on their own, in terms of whether to, you know, ordinance first resolution?
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Mr. Schambor?
Yes, through the Chair. So Ms. Wall, the Planning Commission adopted it by ordinance. It was the staff recommendation at that discussion to pass it by ordinance, to become part of the comprehensive plan. And that was based on the Steering Committee's recommendation as well. The conversation that the Planning Commission did not go into the weeds as to what the Assembly's options were, but they really took it as face value as to what came forward to them, and spent more of their time discussing the content of the plan.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Wall? Thank you. Are there further questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Mr. Schambor, we've evidently adopted two area plans by ordinance. I mean, I think one thing many of us are, you know, worried about is just increased restrictions, or things that can then lead to problems for, you know, as we're trying to do development. Have we run, are you aware, or the manager or others aware of issues that arose from the adoption of the Oak Bay and Lemon Creek plans by ordinance in terms of, yeah, are you aware of issues that have arisen from that?
Mr. Schambor?
Yes, through the Chair. So, that's correct. Oak Bay and Lemon Creek area plan were adopted by ordinance. And so what that means, it's really a tool for the Assembly, the Planning Commission, and staff to base its decisions on when making policy. So, it, at the end of the day, the Assembly has the opportunity to pass ordinances to negate or promote, you know, items in the plan. I do want to read a little bit of our FAQ section on the website, because I think it clarifies it a little more cleanly than I just have. And so, some of the questions that we have listed there are, what if the area plan recommendations are not the same as the Comp Plan? And so at that point, when an area plan is adopted by ordinance, it becomes an addition to the Comp Plan. CBJ Departments, Planning Commission, the Assembly can refer to the newer, often more detailed information found in the area plan to help with decisions. If there was a conflict between the Comp Plan and an area plan, the newer document takes precedence. However, you know, the plans in itself are visionary and a guiding tool, so there's nothing concrete. The follow-up on that is, what if the area plan that is adopted in the Comp Plan conflicts with the parts of the land use code? Well, that's kind of a different scenario. If it is adopted by ordinance into the Comp Plan and contains recommendations or actions that conflict with existing code, the existing code takes precedence. So in order, if there was an example in here to change all of downtown to M U two, when you adopt this by ordinance for the comprehensive plan, it's still a recommendation. It's not adopted immediately. You would also have to take it up as the body through the Planning Commission process to adopt new code, making that the case. So it is a guiding and a visual document, and nothing is going to, in terms of code, get changed until the Assembly eventually does it.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Thank you for that, Mr. Schambor. That's helpful. And I think maybe I was using terms that are, you know, depending on who's looking at it, would, could be, you know, some people might see it as a problem, some people may not. I guess, maybe a better way to ask is, have you, are you aware of times where things in the Oak Bay or Lemon Creek area plans have, I'm just going to say prevented development, and then again, could be, all in the eye of the beholder, but are you aware of development that has been prevented by things in those plans that were adopted by ordinance?
Thank you. Through the Chair, I'm not aware of specific examples. Again, I think, you know, a lot of the plans are really looking forward on how to encourage development, based on, you know, small areas, priorities of that time. So I have not heard of examples that are limiting or constricting, you know, to the points where, you know, A, the community or the Assembly would not want. It's more of a visioning document to see what is potentially allowable. And I think that's been the approach of the Steering Committee with this plan, is how to encourage economic development, which is, or any sort of development that is in line with a Steering Committee and the neighborhood's feelings. So, really looking, again, back to this idea that you have a very nuanced look at a part of our community, with the idea of painstaking, and you look at what's been discussed in the past, and public comment to put forward something that is, you know, to be useful for all.
Thank you. Are there additional questions? Mr. Schambor, I have a question. It's a little along the lines of what Mr. Smith is asking. I think, you know, one of my concerns is that, frankly, development in Juneau is hard, and there's a lot of reasons for that. A lot of the developable, easily developable land has been developed. Certainly, some people cite rules and regulations and code as being excessive. So my concern about adopting this by ordinance is that we add another layer of, sort of like yet another layer of things that CDD has to check and go through, and maybe find something that a project catches on. What could we say to the public that's watching to say, well, that's not the case? Or is that the case? That this is yet another document that rather than, if it were adopted by resolution, where they could say, well, here's what the guidance is, but we don't have to do that. It might be something that says, here's, this is by ordinance, so we have to do that in the developer camp, or it's just too much.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, talking a little bit about how Blueprint Downtown would be used, you know, specifically from the CDD's perspective, because of, that's where I work. If you take a look at our staff report for anything that goes to the Planning Commission, we have a table where we check all the plans anyway. This will be just another review of the document, and to put into the window review of the document and to put into the window to make sure that the planning commission knew when they're making decisions, you know, what pertaining will part of the the plan exists, and so that they have that as a resource. You know, the planning commissioner may, you know, with their wherewithal may choose to to agree with what was in the plan in terms of the project that they're reviewing, or not agree with it and just make their decisions. It's just an information resource for our normal process. Once planners get used to going and finding all the nooks and crannies in each of our plans, it doesn't take much time at all to review for conformity. And like I said, going back to the steering committee approach on this, this is not by any hand, by hands, a way to constrict or or try to stop developing. Their whole methodology and message for the community was to encourage economic development and how to enhance the liveliness of the area, whether it's through historic preservation, more housing resources, walkability. So they're looking for more development if you read through the plan pretty, pretty strictly.
Thank you, Mr. Chambor. Do we have further comments or questions? No. Oh, Mr. Smith? Thank you.
So just to help me on this, and maybe it's helpful if I give a specific example. For instance, on page twenty-two of the blueprint, it's a Blueprint Downtown, it says, it's one of the actions is tie future development of the subport into the cultural campus in the Ocquon Village Glacier Avenue Subdistrict. I guess the question is, should we adopt this plan by ordinance if someone was proposing development in the subport that was not tied in to a cultural campus in the Ocquon, you know, Village Glacier Avenue Sub district? Would we expect a staff recommendation of denying that development based on the Blueprint Downtown plan that had been adopted, if it was adopted by ordinance?
Mr. Chambor?
Chair, again, trying to work with the hypothetical. Again, the downtown blueprint is a recommendation. Comprehensive plan is a recommendation. And so the staff will list what is suggested as part of that plan, but again, not authorized to restrict that. So again, in that example, there's probably another level of decision-making that would be made by the Assembly to make sure that that was a priority. At this point, it's not. It's just a recommendation. And so in so in review of a process, as a staffer would look at this, you know, they might note Blueprint Downtown suggests that this is tied in to this district. Have you thought about this or this? And so then that gives the 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 planning commission something to talk about with the applicant when it arises to say, hey, we had a steering committee who spent, you know, multiple years looking at what's going to enhance this area, you know, have you talked with them? Or and then at that point, you know, whatever the answer of the, the planning commission has leeway to make a decision whether they think it's important or not.
Thank you, Mr. Chambor. Madam Mayor?
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Chambor, but that to me sounds more like a resolution because I know the planning commission has used the comp plan to deny things before. And if the comp plan is just a guide, they wouldn't use this comp plan. So still having trouble figuring out the difference.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Wall, did you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I move that the Assembly direct staff to draft a ordinance to be introduced that would adopt the Blueprint Downtown as an addendum to the comprehensive plan and ask for unanimous consent.
Did you have something additional?
If I could speak to my motion?
Yes.
I appreciate this discussion, and, you know, I'm not, I don't feel strongly either way, resolution or adoption by ordinance. But after listening to Mr. Chambor, the recommendations of the planning commission, who are, you know, using these documents regularly, recommendations of staff, as well as the steering committee who has been working on this for so long, I'm willing to take their recommendations. I think Mr. Chambor did a good job of assuaging my, any fears I had that this would, you know, inadvertently do something we didn't want it to do. As he said, this this document has been put into place to help with development, and it provides a lot more updated guidance for our decision-makers than is currently in our comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Are there any objections? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just for a question, Mr. Chambor, you're, I'm switching between documents, so I think I'm on the right one. On page twenty-eight of this evening's Committee of the Whole packet, there's these kind of agency recommendations or updates or something noted, the top one being CDD recommends that the entire document be reviewed for spelling errors, typos, incorrect names, as several are identified during agency review of the draft document. Has that been done or or not? Or will it just be done if we adopt it in either form? Or do you need to be directed to do that?
Mr. Chambor?
Yes, through the chair. So the plan as posted and as in your packet is what's been approved and recommended by the planning commission going forward. The revisions and updates suggested in that table would also have to be completed and decided upon. And so some of these are obviously just technical, and that first one you mentioned was easy to do, and we would, we would do that. But some of these others that impact policy, you would just have to consider whether you wanted to take the recommendations here and strike them from the plan or to adopt the plan as is in front of you.
Very good. Thank you. I remove my objection.
Are there any objections to Ms. Wall's motion to adopt this plan by ordinance? Seeing none, I will object, and I'll speak to my objection. I, I am objecting. I believe that we should adopt this plan by resolution. I think it will still provide the guidance that's requested. I think that the very excellent plan that has been developed will still be there, and it can be used. It won't be quite the same as the, you know, maybe not, won't be Appendix P and be adopted by resolution instead. I, I believe that in Juneau, it is really, really hard to develop. And it is really, we have many, many rules and layers that make getting things like additional housing through the pipeline really hard. And if there is something that we can do to lighten that burden slightly, or at least not add to the burden by adopting this by ordinance and providing hooks that we may not have intended to provide, that then prevents something from happening or makes something much more costly, I'd go that direction. I think there's been a lot of talk about moving away from broader area plans to smaller plans. And I think this is maybe a step in that direction to adopt this by resolution. So I, I do object. And I think if no one has anything further, Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I had a question perhaps for the attorney. So if this were to be adopted by, by resolution instead of ordinance, it's my understanding this is basically going to edit the comprehensive plan. And I'm assuming parts of that were adopted by ordinance, and where things are newer, they would supersede. So if something was adopted by ordinance and put into the comprehensive plan by ordinance, if we change this to a resolution, which is, I don't believe has the same force as an ordinance, would those no longer, would the new edits no longer supersede the older content?
Good question. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Kelly, so that that is correct. So an ordinance has full force of law. It is permanent in nature. It is the guiding document. A resolution is the next lower step. And as Mr. Chambor has said, all of these are recommendations. But the comprehensive plan is your solid starting document. Anything that's added on to it, if it's by resolution, it's going to have a lower level of authority than if it's by ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I guess I just want to put my thoughts out there just because we are going to be voting on to see which way we want to go here. I've kind of been kicking it back and forth, which way to go, resolution or ordinance. I, I hear you, and I think you're completely correct on some of the impediments to development. I'm hoping a way to move forward and help on that is Title forty-nine revision, which we have determined is a priority and I know is being worked on. I guess I see a lot of good work in here and a lot of things that I think could be transformative or just really help tie downtown together in just some really important ways, pedestrians, sense of place, sustainability. I mean, there's just a lot of, I mean, this is our commercial core. It's where a million and a half people see Juneau for the first time. And I think there's just some, I think there's some really good stuff in here that I think will make lasting cohesive and significant benefits to downtown. And I think the impacts are, I think will be, will be beneficial. I'd worry we just, we would lose some of those good things if it was by resolution. I don't agree with everything in here. I'm, you know, should the rock dump be not industrial? I don't know. But I, I've since kind of, as I've been thinking about it, hearing and reading and looking at it more, I think I'm going to be supporting adopting as an ordinance. So thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Bryson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. After listening to the discussion, I too was not quite sure how I wanted to vote at the beginning of the discussion, but as I've listened more, I do see more flexibility in the resolution, less flexibility if we did it as an ordinance. And when we're talking about development, more flexibility means lower cost. Less flexibility means higher cost. I know that this, it'd be a stretch to connect those dots, but we've seen enough development to know that the more flexibility that we give to city staff and developers, the easier it's going to be to develop, the easier it is to develop it, the less it's going to cost. If we do it by ordinance, it's going to prevent, or not prevent, I'm sorry, that's, that would be too harsh. But less flexibility would have a more likelihood of increasing cost. I'm sorry. Having less flexibility would give us the most likelihood of increased cost. If we offer flexibility, then that would give us the most likelihood of decreased cost. So I'm going to support Ms. Hale in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. This was a tough one, too, because I understand what both you and Mr. Bryson are saying. But what I guess is going to make my mind up, and thank you to the committee that did all this work, is it's an updated plan. And if this updated plan takes over from a very old plan, I guess that's what I'm leaning to, because reading this updated plan, it's pretty generic is not the right word, but allows things that the comp plan didn't do. So I've kind of switched my thought listening to every, to the presentation and everything. So I will be supporting Ms. Wall's motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we are ready for our vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, for the motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance to adopt the Blueprint Downtown Plan as part of the comprehensive plan. Ms. Wall?
Yes.
And we don't have, Ms. Hugh Scandies?
Yes.
Ms. Adgason?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
I don't want to say no. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with a yes.
Madam Deputy Mayor?
And I will go with a no, and I'll have my last vote on the cow be one against seven.
Yes.
No, it's okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Seven to one. Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And moving on to staff reports, Madam Manager, are there any staff reports? No. Madam Mayor?
Thank you for that. And I'm sorry that your last vote went down eight to one, down in flames, but that is not indicate indicative of your, indicative, there we go, the right word, of your tenure as Deputy Mayor. And you have done a fine job, and I truly appreciate your chairing the Committee of the Whole, and your being a little bit different from me, so I could call you up and say, this is what I think, what this is what you think. And then we tend to either convince one or the other of our arguments, or we end up meeting somewhere in the middle. So it's been a pleasure to have you as Chair.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's actually been a delight to to be Deputy Mayor and Chair of Cow. So, thank you. Madam Manager, are there staff reports? No. Oh, sorry. Sorry. And our next, your next meeting date is November fourth, twenty twenty-four, and we are adjourned.